All right, good evening. This is the Stoughton City Council reorganization meeting. It is Tuesday, April nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, and the first item would be the roll call.
Okay, Lagaki.
I am fully here.
Mieski.
Present.
Reeves.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Vanegas.
Here.
Kolski.
Here.
Caravelo. Is Alder Caravelo here?
I think I saw him on there, but.
Doom.
Here.
Hiley. Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
At eleven Alders present.
All right, and then we'll do that again after we do the oath of office, which is the next item of business. And then Candy will administer the oath, and you can give us directions of what you want us to do.
Yep, I'll start with Mayor Swadley. I'll have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tim Swadley.
I, Tim Swadley.
Have been elected to the office of mayor.
Have been elected to the office of mayor.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And will faithfully and honorably discharge the duties.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I, what I'll do next with the four Alders is have you raise your right hand and repeat after me, and then state your name. So I state your name.
I.
I am Brett Schumacher.
I'm Mieski.
Hi, Frank Raff.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson.
Having been elected to the office of alderperson.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
Of said office to the best of my abilities.
You're sworn in. Congratulations, everyone.
Hello, Rob.
That timed out well. All right, and then
I'm just in a.
We have communications, and obviously, we want to thank Ozzy for his years of service on the Stoughton City Council.
I'll call you after I'm done with this, and Judy has a meeting at church. We'll call you after that.
So if anybody has any words of wisdom for Ozzy, or Ozzy, if you want to say something, you can.
Well, I really enjoyed my time on the council. I think we got a great council group. Everybody's good to work with. And I feel like it's a really valuable team, and, and especially being led by Mayor Swadley, who's dedicated a lot of his time to the city, and I really appreciate it, and he was great to work with over the years. But someday, I hope to come back and, uh, one of the side committees at some time. But thanks, everybody, for working with, working with over the years.
You're well and happy, Ozzy.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Ozzy.
You're welcome.
Future. Thank you.
All right, the next item of business. Are there any other communications from Alders? Um, and then I also want to welcome Frank. Frank Raff is, was the high vote getter on the write-in vote in District Four. I think he had a total of four votes. So I don't know if you want to tell the story, Frank, on how that happened, but congratulations and welcome.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it. I mean, I, I didn't know nobody was running, and then I was hanging out with some friends, and they were like, well, we're gonna vote for you. Four is all it took, I guess, so.
My can do.
Welcome.
Thank you for accepting it, Frank, and if I could ever be of any help, just reach out to me.
Yeah, definitely. I might do that.
Yeah, thanks, Frank. It's good to know you have four friends. That's really good.
Well, three. One of them begrudgingly.
That's twice the council average.
So Frank, you must not have voted for yourself.
I did not vote for myself. That's correct.
Well, excellent. We're glad to have you, and anything we can do to, to support you, just let us know. We send in more information than you'll want. If you want to visit and meet our department heads, they love to show off what they do and the buildings that they work out of, so do as much as you can. We understand that, you know, being on the council is not a full-time job, even though it probably could be. But you're certainly welcome to tap into any resources that we might have available to you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I actually highly recommend that going from each. When I got on council, it was an eye-opener to really tour the library, the utilities, Public Works. It gives you a better understanding how each department works.
Sounds good. I will.
All right, are there any other communications from Alders? Okay, hearing none. The next item is, I just wanted to acknowledge it's National Volunteer Week this week. And on Friday, we had five of our local volunteers that were nominated came to City Hall, and they were recognized, and the proclamations are in your packet. And those people included Anne Marie Oakland, who started up the lunches for Vikings program, so they feed meals to students during the summer. They set up in three locations in the Stoughton area where our youth can come and get free bag lunches. We also had Dan Metz, who collects food from different places around Stoughton and drops them off at the senior center amongst other places for people. And, and people just now they like the food, but they like to be able to visit with Dan. And then we had Louise Beckwith and Gordon Pregel, who volunteer in the memory care unit at Skollin. So certainly, their contributions at the Skollin home were recognized and appreciated. And then Joel Thorne, who helps with the Nine Lives cat. She does advocates, advocates and helps cats, especially those that are injured, rehabilitate them. So these are all some of the wonderful things that people do in our community that sometimes go unnoticed. They don't do it for the glory, but certainly, we wanted to take a moment to recognize them on Friday. We did post a little bit more information on our social media today as well. So certainly, it's the least we can do for people that give up their valuable time here in our community, as well as, you know, all of you. So thanks for your efforts in the past and going forward. That would take us into our regular business for tonight. So we have a series of items in there, and the first thing that we typically do is pardon me?
Point of order, you need to take roll call again now with the new council.
Oh, sure. Yep, we can do that. And thanks for reminding me, and whenever you're ready, Candy, go ahead.
I'm ready. Mieski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Hunt. There you are. Schumacher.
Here.
Vanegas.
Here.
Tykolski.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Raff.
Here.
Hiley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
We have twelve Alders present.
Excellent. Thank you. So the organizational business we have tonight, the first one would be to select the council president. And at this point, I would open it up for nominations. Would anybody like to make a nomination? I see Alder Person Jensen's hand is up.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think with, with everything that we have have on our plate, I would feel, feel very comfortable with Regina continuing on as our, as our president. And I would make the motion to nominate Regina as President of the council.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, and then I have to say it three times. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations twice? Any other nominations three times? Hearing none, I guess we could just vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you. Next item would be selection of the Vice President of the City Council. And then Alder, President Hirsch has her hand up. Go ahead.
Um, another longstanding and somebody who's been involved with the council for a while that has contributed greatly, that would mean I greatly appreciate what Greg has done through the years, but I would like to open it up to see if Alder Person Reeves would be interested in serving as Vice President this year.
I would agree with that.
Set a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations once? Any other nominations twice? Any other nominations three times? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Lisa, that's your, that's for you. Now you're supposed to say no.
None opposed, that motion does carry.
Thank you.
All right.
I think.
Easy peasy. Easy peasy.
Yeah, Regina's promised she'd never miss a meeting.
Carry the ball for me, and I'll just sweep up every now and then and watch.
Oh, no, there's a lot of things that we have to get done this time that I'll need two heads on it, so.
Well, I'm honored. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for doing it, and thanks for doing it last year, Greg.
You bet.
All right, next, next item is, there's resolutions in here confirming the mayor's appointment to standing boards, committees, and commissions for the term of two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. And the first one would be for the, for the standing committees. I would entertain a motion.
Move to accept the mayor's appointments.
And is there a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, thank you. I tried to honor as many, either your first or your second or third request as we could for the standing committees as well as the non-standing. So if we didn't get you on the one you wanted this year, we'll, we'll, we'll try again next year. So some, some of the committees are more popular than others, but, and we have some people that wanted to, to mix things up a bit, which is also good for, you know, for growth. So, you know, don't be afraid to do that next year as well. The next one is for the, what we would call the non-standing committees, although a lot of those meet pretty regularly as well. I would entertain a motion for those.
I would move to accept the mayor's appointments to the non-standing committees.
Second.
All right.
Take your pick.
There's a motion and a second. Did you catch that, Candy?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and the same thing here. I tried to honor as many as I could. I think it was pretty successful on this one. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. And then the next one is the citizen committee appointment. And there's a couple that are, we're still recruiting for. We learned earlier tonight that we're gonna have one additional one on Park and Rec. I've talked to Attorney Dragney in the past, and if you want, you can approve it as is. And for those that we learned late, I've been told by Attorney Dragney that I can simply unappoint by contacting the clerk, and then when I reappoint the replacement, it would come through this body. I know there's some that will be on for the regular council meeting last week that were too late to get in the packet. So this will be, you know, ongoing, so you can see, we have one for sure for Public Works. And then we're gonna have one that we learned about tonight for Park and Rec. Emily's gonna be moving. So we want to at least thank her for the time she served on Park and Rec. And then Public Works, we're gonna be losing Kathy Engelberger moved. So she did a lot of great work on Public Works, as well as starting up the Prairie Task Force. And also Kathy was on the tree commission, so we're gonna miss her as well. As far as I know, everybody else is planning on staying. So we do have on our social media, we do have a poster that we're still looking for a few community members. So if you have somebody in mind, you can send them my way, and if we still have a position available, we'll get them on for the next meeting or two, so we can get our committees filled up. Any questions about any of that?
Mayor, can I make the amendment so we don't, you don't have to go through removing Emily's? Can I make an amendment to remove Emily Cluse from Park and Rex, and she is moving out of the city?
Yeah, you can do that, and you can either make it after the regular motion or just include it right into the motion, and we can change the resolution. Either way, whatever you're more comfortable with.
Sure, I can make it part of the motion is to approve these, the mayor's cities of appointment for standing committees with the amendment of removing Emily Cluse, who is no longer going to be a city resident, and I so move.
Uh, second, second by Alder Person Vanegas. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
And any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
One abstention. Okay, thank you. That motion carries. And then the next one is for citizen appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. And most of the people on here are carried over. These are typically, most of them are one-year terms. There are a few exceptions. I know we're still looking for a couple people on some of these commissions as well, but for the most part, we've had pretty good success recruiting. The library board ones were the ones we added with the amended agenda, so that's why they're in red. And everything else, I think, is fairly self-explanatory. And then there'll be a few more probably next Tuesday, and maybe a couple after that to fill out the various committees and commissions. Any questions? I would entertain a motion on this one.
Mayor, I have a question. As you scroll down, I think Rachel's name is on there as a citizen under Hall of Fame Committee.
Uh, yeah, and do that, and they only meet once a year.
I know, but I didn't know if she was also put on as the non-standing committees. I didn't know if it was twice, because I thought this was just for citizens and not for council people.
It's not required to be a council person to be on this, but she asked to be on it as a citizen member, which is helpful.
Excellent.
We're having a trouble getting the quorum, and we were a couple years behind because of COVID, and now we're caught up. And I'm not even sure if this group will meet this year, because we did select somebody for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, and two thousand and twenty-two. But I wanted to appoint just in case this group wanted to get together to go through some of the nominees. We've been doing some research, because some of the people that were nominated, we didn't have any of background information on them. And now I've been working to, with the library and the museum to get more information on those that have been nominated. So when they go through the selection process, they have something to work on, and we might want to meet just to kind of have a standardized format for all the bios, for all the folks that have been nominated. So that's why I went ahead and went to get appointment on these, just in case we decide to do that. Um, any other questions? All right, did I get a motion on this one?
Nope, I don't think so.
Move to approve.
All right, there's a motion. Was that Mieski?
Correct.
Thank you. Second by Caravelo. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Oh, aye.
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 Any opposed?
Mayor, abstain from this vote.
Okay. That motion does carry. And then the next one, we do the RDA separately. And because on the redevelopment authority, according to the state statute, it takes a four-fifths vote. And I don't know how that ever came to be, but it is. So we do this resolution separately because of that. Um, I would entertain a motion for this one.
Move to approve the resolution.
And there's a, there's a motion. Was that Mieski? Who is the second?
Yes, it was.
Reeves for second.
Reeves for second, okay. Any discussion on this one? Um, and on this one, then Ben would be replacing Ozzy, so thanks for doing that, Ben. Hopefully, you'll enjoy it. You'll learn a lot, and, you know, I think you'll bring a new perspective, so that'll be great. And then Lucas, I think he started midterm on his last appointment, so he's done a great job on there. And of course, President Hirsch has been stuck with this thing the whole way, and I know she wants to see it through. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, and the next one is a resi- resolution for the local depositories. Um, Finance Director Illinger, is there anything you want to say about this one? This is kind of more of yours and mine. See on here.
Yep, he's on mute, though.
Okay.
I think he's trying to get off mute.
Yep, trying to do too many things at once here. Um, we were just adding the names to the multiple banks that we've got depository accounts at. We also modified the resolution to put in both position and name so that it will make it easier in the future if we have turnover. You know, we could just say, okay, this position's changed. It's automatically that the new person will have it, rather than going through a resolution every time.
All right, any questions or comments from Alders at this point? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Make the motion approve. Well, go ahead. Lisa, and then I'll second Lisa.
Okay, and any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. And then the next one is for the newspaper. Candy, did you have anything on this one that you wanted to talk about?
No, I really don't. I think we'll stick with the Hub for the year. I know they're going through some changes, so it's been a little topsy-turvy, but we'll move forward with the Hub as our official paper.
And it looks like you also have to use the State Journal for the elections.
Yes, that is, if the city of Stoughton doesn't have anything on the ballot, then Dane County will use that paper.
Okay, well, let's hope we don't have to do that. All right, any questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Was that Hunt?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. And then we did have one other item that came to us yesterday that's on the agenda. And this is an item where on the Fifty-One West Development, Bob DeVore is planning on getting a letter of credit, which were required in our developers' agreement. And he's working with one community bank and also working with Steve Zock, who's an attorney that, that we use here in the city for our personnel matters. So she works, he works pretty closely with AJ, which is unrelated to this transaction. So I contacted Attorney Dragney for this proposed waiver in conflict of interest. Basically, they really just have to disclose to us that they're gonna be representing Bob on this deal, but it's not really relevant to any other work we do, so we think it's okay. So we would want a motion to approve this waiver of conflict of interest. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to do that.
Move to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, did you catch that, Candy? Because I didn't.
That was Brett.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions about it?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, does this apply to the entire office of Boardman? And whoever else is on there, or is this just for Matt?
Well, it's, it's for Steve Zock, is the attorney for Boardman.
Okay.
And so he, he represents Boardman on this transaction, and then he also helps us on our personnels. So this is really coming from him, because he's the one representing, you know, their firm is representing Bob DeVore in this transaction, in the bank, I should say. So I think it is for the actual firm, but this is pretty common practice, not only with attorneys, but even with engineers these days, and sometimes with financial consultants as well, because there's just not that many of them that specialize in municipal, municipal law in this case.
Sure.
But hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thank you very much, and I think that's all we had for tonight, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Okay.
Motion by Jensen, second by Vanegas. Any discussion? Motion by Jensen, second by Vanegas. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all.
Any opposed? None opposed and I'll see most everyone Tuesday night.
Yep.
Thank you.
Take care.
Good night. Night, all.
Bye, everybody.